Okay, good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 25th, 2020 School Board Meeting. The Board has been in closed session since 5:30 this evening for items listed on the agenda. We have six Board members present, one absent, and at this time I ask that we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight, we have one very special recognition. Our shining star will not be recognized tonight. So tonight, we have the recognition of the retirement of David Smith, Executive Director of Technology. And so, we've asked Karen Stufan, Secretary for the Board and on the Technology Committee, to bestow the honors.
On behalf of the Board of Education and District 205, I am pleased to honor your service, Dave, to District 205. I'm sure this is uncomfortable for you to be in the limelight. It's just not you, but here you are. It's not in the nature of technology and the technology staff to seek recognition. However, it's critically important to recognize your leadership with technology over the long tenure with us. You've been able to retain, recruit, hire necessary talent to lead us up to this point, and you've moved us forward significantly from where we were upon your arrival. For this, we are grateful. Technology is not the limelight in any organization, and yet, it better be ready, available, working, and capable of responding quickly to any user request anytime, anywhere. It's why it's called the backbone of all organizations. It runs behind the scene, never asks for recognition, and is always looking to better serve its users, like you, Dave. For this, we thank you for your commitment to serving District 205 for more than 12 years. Your staff shared with me a story of you being asked to review RFP bids, make a decision, and to put together a board recommendation on a Cisco phone system for the district. This all even before you walked in the door for your first day of work at District 205. And you've stayed with us long enough to replace that system. When you took over the District Technology Director position, we had around 800 computers total, and now we're well over 8,000 devices of various types and uses. Another staff member shared how you have been helpful in explaining all the logistics pertaining to technology in an education environment. Through your mentoring from the beginning, you were able to develop your staff back then, when it was crucial this focus take place, to be able to better address constant change and the demand for assisting District 205 staff and students. Your example showed how technology is not just hardware and software, but about listening to the concerns and needs of the user. This allows your technology staff to put the staff member and students at ease in adopting and utilizing technology for their use. This is significant, given you came from AT&amp;T Bell Laboratories Computing Center, which is what I'm familiar with, and I know that you're not with the end-users back then. And so, it was a huge move for you, and it was a big risk. And so, we're very grateful for your development and your commitment to getting outside of your comfort zones. It's really helped us a lot, and you've gotten us to this stage. Coming into District 205 was a big shift for you in terms of working directly with an end-user environment. You came up to speed and were instrumental in our district decision to bring devices into the classroom, really integrating technology into the user environment and our business, which is really about students' learning and teachers' teaching. You spearheaded the presentation to the Board of bringing devices to the classroom, and it was the first time the Board had experienced a multi-departmental presentation that even included a peer of yours in another district who was presenting. And this began our deployment into technology integration into the classroom. And the focus was not for technology's sake, but education-focused, driven by enhanced instruction and the use of instructional technology coaches, and really bringing technology to the classroom. And that was the first time we were really doing that. It became a no-brainer for us to go in this direction, hence the MLI and the coaches began. You brought to the Board the idea of creating tech services internship, where our students can begin technology work experience in-house for real-world technology application learning. Thus, TSI was launched at York, where repairs are completed in-house. Under your tenure, we worked with Elmhurst Library, who now offers Google Classroom for parents, supported by us, the District 205. Students have presented at the Illinois State Capitol as part of tech. District staff attend and present at a variety of conferences, including ICE, ISTE, Learning Forward, ASCD, and more, since we've launched MLI and brought technology into the classroom. You launched our Technology Committee to ensure the user had a voice, and the team began to look at what is needed within the whole district to seamlessly integrate it into all functions. We have ways to go to integrate it into the fabric of our organizational functions, but the team is identifying this work, and you are already helping RJ get up to speed, even before he's onboard, to take us to the next level. Dave, you have done such a great job building and establishing a strong technology foundation for District 205, and for that, we are grateful. It is solid, and we can only build upon the visionary hard work you and your team, along with the entire district, at the district office, all the way to the classroom, have put into place. Your adaptability and teamwork has been recognized, is recognized, thank you. Your wealth of knowledge, your thoughtfulness, your conscientiousness, and your resourcefulness will be missed. Thank you for your significant contributions to District 205. I didn't talk about any of the backbone stuff, it was all bringing technology to the classroom, and you helped us start that process. We will miss you, and we send you off with our gratitude and the best of good wishes in your next chapter. I'm sure you'll be a resource for us in your new position. Thank you so much, Dave.
Okay, and we do understand that you might be here next time, but we wanted to make sure we didn't miss the opportunity. So, if you're here, we'll say thank you again, but no plaque, only one.
I'll come either way, I'll be in the audience if I'm not sitting here.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public comments. The Board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens, or representatives of other public agencies. I have one name on the list, we ask that you come up. There's a timer set that will beep at three minutes, and at that point, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Beth Doertie?
My name is Beth Doertie, and I have three children in District 205. I'm here to speak to a topic that you guys discussed at your last Board meeting, which is rolling out the standard-based grading to the high school. I would encourage you to ask and look at how this has already been implemented in our district. My children were part of the initial pilot program two years ago at Hawthorne. When my son entered 6th grade last year, it followed him up to middle school. Over the past two and a half years, our experience with it has been very frustrating, and I'd like to share some of those experiences with you. First, there's been a lot of confusion among teachers and students and parents, how to apply it and how to understand it. A friend of mine relayed to me that her twins had received the same grade in reading by two different teachers, despite the fact that one reads above grade level, and, in her words, the other one can't read. At middle school conferences, I had a staff member comment to me that I knew more about the grading system than most of them. This is not acceptable, it's not okay. If the teachers don't understand how to apply the system, the resulting grades will be ineffective and leave the students and parents confused. We have been told repeatedly by both teachers and administrators that no one gets a four. This is confusing. Why is it part of the grading scale if no one can achieve it, if it's impossible to achieve? Just tonight, I had someone asking me about their kids' grades, about why there's a four when they can't achieve a four. Also, the kids are supposed to be able to go back and redo or retake portions of projects or tests to show that they fully do understand the material. However, when my son has tried to do this, he's been told he can't. Again, this is confusing. Second, and probably one of my biggest issues with this, is the grading system does not allow parents and guardians to support their children. Support at home is one major factor I routinely read that is important in student success. However, under this grading system, no assignments, quizzes, tests have come home. I've asked around, and this seems to be true for all three middle schools. I've been told by teachers that they need to hold on to the work in order to measure my child's progress. Combined with the district's no homework policy, this makes it very difficult to know if my son is struggling or needs assistance. Without seeing the actual work, I'm at a loss to help him understand his grade, let alone understand it myself. Mind you, he's 11, so going and having this conversation with his teacher and then relaying it to me is not all that practical. Also, despite attending several meetings about the standard-based grading, I'm still not clear how our district came up with a number-to-letter grade conversion table. This is a problem. At the time of parent-teacher conferences, my son would have had a C in English, despite the fact that his teacher told me that he's doing really well, in fact, better than most of the class. I would urge you to ask questions about this grading system. Please seek out feedback from students, teachers, and parents. I know I'm the only one here to talk about this tonight, but I've spoken to a lot of elementary and middle school parents, and the general feeling ranges from general indifference to those who haven't looked at it, to outright disdain. I caution you not to move too quickly. This year is the first year the grading system has been in the middle school, and it's only for the 6th graders. As parents and students get closer and closer to whenever they think grades matter, I think you will be hearing from more of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other public comments? Okay, so with that, we will move on to approval of Board meeting minutes. Approval of January 28th, 2020, and February 11th, 2020, and February 12th, 2020 minutes. Were there any changes to those minutes? Okay, then they stand as presented. Approval of January 28th, 2020 minutes, February 11th, 2020 minutes, and February 12th, 2020, closed session minutes. All three of those dates are closed session minutes. They stand as presented. All right, next item is the Superintendent's Agenda, Consent Agenda. Would anyone like to pull any items off of the consent agenda? Nothing? Okay, then could I please have a motion to approve, motion for the consent agenda?
I move that the Board approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda, items A through G.
I'll second. Go ahead and call the vote. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent, motion passes. Next is Superintendent's Agenda, action items.
The only action item tonight, 8A, if we could have a motion to approve the settlement agreement, please.
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the settlement agreement and general release between Kimberly, Cincinnati, and the Board of Education.
Second. Okay, we will call the vote. Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent, motion passes. Next is the Superintendent's Communication, item A, Social Studies Curriculum Implementation Update from Dr. Thompson.
So typically, these types of presentations are on the first agenda of the month, but as we only have one meeting in March, and we had a committee of the whole meeting for the first meeting in February, we need to ask you in March to approve the display of resources, because those have to be displayed 30 days, and we would then come back in April and ask you to approve them. And so, we felt that we needed to update you on the social studies and science curriculum work that's been going on in the district. That's where the primary resource conversation will be for the next school year. And the science work started about four years ago, and the social studies work started about three years ago, I think. And so, this work has been ongoing over time, and so this is to give you kind of the current state of where we're at. Thank you.
All right, well, thanks so much for having me here tonight to brag a little bit about the great things we're doing in social studies in our district. It's been really fun so far this year to get to know the teachers, the CDT members, the department chairs, that are all working in the social studies world, because they are really a great group of educators, and they are working every day to reach this goal of challenging students to become informed citizens so that they can really make a difference in the world. So the new Illinois learning standards were created from the C3 framework, and that's college, career, and civic life-ready. And so, those naturally really do meet our district vision of creating future-ready students. In terms of our learning and teaching priorities, a lot of our work, while all of our work in social studies this year has been to develop those curricular resources that are aligned to the new standards and are rigorously teaching those new standards. So tonight, I'm going to review the district's social studies learning vision, update you on the implementation timeline, review the instructional materials that we're using, and talk about the instructional shifts that we're asking our social studies teachers to do. So, two years ago, when the CDT teams were first put together, they really wanted to capitalize on the fact that we are a unit district and really leverage that power. And so, they did make some shifts in the topics that were taught at each of the grade levels. And so, this is just a review of the topics that are taught at each of the grade levels in order to create a really comprehensive experience for our students as they go K through 12 in our district. So, the implementation schedule. Three years ago, district administrators started to learn about the new Illinois learning standards. Then, two years ago was when they created the CDT teams, and the teams did that learning. They learned about the new learning standards, and they learned about the inquiry design model. Last year was when they started really digging in and writing the curriculum. This year, 6th grade is implementing their new curriculum, and the high school is implementing their new curriculum. 7th and 8th grade are working on writing, and K through 5 is working to develop the learning plans for their curriculum and try out those units. Next year, there's going to be optional implementation of the social studies curriculum for K through 5, based on a survey that we gave the teachers. 7th grade will be full implementation, and then the following school year, 21, 22, everybody K through 8, and the high school is already there, will be in full implementation of the new social studies curriculum. And there's going to be ongoing work every year in order to reflect upon and revise the curriculum as we go. So these are the instructional materials that we're working with through K through 5. These are just a couple of examples. We're really designing the curriculum using Mentor text. And the reason why this is so powerful is because, as an elementary teacher, you are given a science curriculum, a social studies curriculum, a literacy curriculum, writing curriculum, math curriculum, and there's not all that time in the day. We really need to work to create interdisciplinary connections and leverage the power of the fact that they are working with one teacher all day, and they can really make connections. So these are Mentor texts that the teachers are able to use in order to teach those social studies concepts. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing about that. The CDT team members were a part of selecting these Mentor texts, and as they're teaching them, they're able to say, like, if they were, you know, if they were good for it or not, and we'll be able to make adjustments based off of that. An additional resource that we will be asking for Board approval for this spring is Myon Reader. So Myon Reader is a personalized digital library that is, it is so cool. So, it's live books at various levels and tons of genres, tons of topics. And so, if I'm a teacher and I'm teaching, you know, community roles and responsibilities, I can type in community roles and responsibilities, and like 15 or 20 texts pop up at different levels that I can either use in my Read Alouds, I can use for guided reading, I can assign them to students to do independent work off of. So I'm really able to make more interdisciplinary connections, because I'm able to use those topics throughout my literacy block as well. And also, there's a current event feature that allows us to be able to have current articles that are readily available through Myon, that we're able to connect to the social studies topics that we're teaching. The instructional materials we're using for the middle school is New Zella, or New Zella, it depends on which subject you teach, is what you like to call it. But New Zella, the thing that they do for us is they're creating custom collections. And so, based off of blueprints that our CDT teams create, they take our learning standards, the teachers unpack them, and then we tell New Zella what we want them to put together for us. And then they put together basically like a digital textbook of articles, videos, pictures, political cartoons, activities, all different things that the teachers can use as a resource then, to teach the new standards. There's professional development that's embedded in it. So 6th grade teachers were able to get the professional learning last summer, 7th grade teachers will get it this summer. And we have a guy who is giving us like continuous professional development, he's like my on-the-spot guy, whenever I need him, he'll call, and he'll call into a CDT team to help us along the way. And we're also able to work with them to adjust our custom collections if we're finding that, you know, we need different articles or more resources. So the instructional shifts that we're really trying to make is that we are trying to get kids to learn through discovery instead of delivery. And the C3 framework, the new standards, have actual standards that are asking kids to learn through inquiry. We're asking them to ask questions, to vet evidence, to vet sources, to make claims, to make arguments. All of that is helping the teachers be the facilitators, and the students really take charge of their learning. This is an example of one of the new second-grade units that was just, I thought it was so exciting when I went to the classroom and saw it. So the essential question that they're trying to find out is how does where we live impact how we live? So as a part of the social studies curriculum, the teachers are getting traditional tales from different regions across the world, and then they're also getting paired informational text that tell about the setting of that traditional tale. So the teachers were able to read those in their mini lessons. And then, the geography standard that goes with that unit for social studies asks students to learn about reading and creating maps. And so then, they leveraged technology, David Smith, and they were using Google Draw to create maps of the places that they read about in those traditional tales. And then they were going to take it one step further in writing and research more about that place and write about it, in order to really answer that essential question about how where we live affects how we live. And so, by designing our curriculum like this through inquiry questions, we're really able to open the doors and chop down the walls between reading, writing, social studies, and make it all connected. So when we're thinking about the instructional shifts, not only can we teach through asking questions, we want the kids to be asking the questions, too. We want them asking the questions and then finding the answers, evaluating the sources, and then taking informed action. It was really neat, I was talking to a student at York about his inquiry that he was doing, and I said, "Well, you know, how do you answer your question, your essential question?" And he said, "Well, you know, I take what I learned about, you know, valid sources from English, and I apply it to the sources that I'm reading in social studies to find out if it's a valid source in order to answer my question." And I'm like, "Oh, that's the kind of connection that we're looking for." And so, it's been really, really exciting to see that come to life through these instructional shifts in this new curriculum. All right, David Smith, action. So I wanted you to see some inquiry in action in our district.
Overall, our class was working to answer the essential question of what was the civil rights era, how did it impact the future, and what were the events that kind of sparked the civil rights era? So we're broken up into our student groups, and we started building a PowerPoint slideshow so we can like help our peers like learn our topic better, and they can teach us their topic. So we broke it down into specifics, we had biographies of multiple important people for each event, plus we needed multiple primary sources for each event, and a classroom activity to kind of engage everyone and get everyone learning.
I think it makes our learning a lot more interesting and more involved as students, hands-on, and a lot more thinking, rather than, I know some history classes can be like notes and lectures, like learning about this and doing those activities, it gets you really involved, it gets you excited to come to class and excited to be learning about all those topics.
I would define inquiry learning as you have a question that you need to seek to answer, but it's up to you to figure out how you want to answer that question, whether you want to do it in some sort of like presentation, or it's up to you. So it's kind of freelance, but you also are trying to find an answer to that question. I've always like been interested in like the brain and neurology, so I specifically focused on memory, and so my essential question was, how do we process and retain information? Because like, when you learn something, you can process it, but why do I forget things? And you've always heard about short-term and long-term memory, but what does that actually really mean?
My essential question is, how are the raw materials of renewable energy converted into usable energy? I've always really been interested in renewable energy, so I really liked this project because I got to like pick what I wanted to do, and it was something I was really interested in.
Generally, I'm like a very structured person, like I like do this, do this, do this. I feel like inquiry helps, because I haven't always been like the most creative person, because now I actually have to come up with my own ideas and actually branch outside of my little bubble. So it helps me become more of an effective learner, because when I'm by myself, I need to know all these strategies, and I need to have different ways of learning, so I can apply that for myself.
Well, it really helped me read like my own learning, and instead of just being given something and having to read, like I got to formulate my own questions and what I wanted to find out about the topic, which really helped me be a lot more interested in it and a lot more passionate about what I was doing.
So you can see, some of that inquiry has already started bleeding into other content areas. When I was reaching out for teachers to video, one teacher was like, "Oh, we just finished a social studies inquiry, but we're doing it in English, too. You can come and talk to the kids about both of those things." I'm like, "Great, that's perfect." And so, I really think we've only scratched the surface on possibilities when we're teaching and learning in this style. And I cannot wait to see the rest of the social studies curriculum come to life over the next couple of years. So you can click to the next slide. Thank you for your support. What questions can I answer?
Thank you. All right, questions, comments?
Yeah. Oh, yep.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see two of you. Whoever wants to go first.
So, at the beginning of your presentation, you said, "We want to challenge students to do..." Can you repeat that part?
Yes, to become informed citizens in order to make a difference in their community.
Which I think is a... Which I think is a great goal. And I have a suggestion, a request, maybe even a plea, and I'd like the board's feedback on this as well, to help students become another thing you said, civic life-ready. So my understanding is that we've split up our study of history going through the, up to the Civil War in middle school. So the first 100 years of US history in middle school and the second 100 their junior year. Many students, in fact, I'm one of them. The last history course I took was my junior year at York. And I suspect my kids will be the same. The framers of the Constitution, the people that wrote the Bill of Rights, I mean, I consider geniuses. At least the process they went through had a dramatic result on the world, certainly in our country, our democracy. As my own daughter said, "You know, I thought differently in middle school. My thinking has evolved. It would be useful to revisit those same topics in high school and learn it the way I think now and from my current perspective." But in high school, we're not giving them the opportunity to go back to the beginning of the history of this country. And I think we're shortchanging our kids by doing that. And I know it was implemented for, you know, what seemed like very logical reasons that we're a unit district, so let's divide it up and we can go a little deeper because we have more time. But I just want to go back and revisit that. And I think we would be better served if we looked at all 225 odd years twice. Curious what other board members think.
Yeah.
I'd just like to ask a clarifying question, I think, so I can frame my head around what Jim is saying. I don't know what slide it is where you have the learning vision.
Yeah, number five.
Where it's kindergarten through grade 12.
Oh, I have the clicker. Sorry.
Through grade 12?
Yeah.
Is that based on standards from nation, Illinois, et cetera?
No, so now the standards, the way that they're written, they, there's discipline standards and then there's inquiry standards. So at every single grade level, there are inquiry standards. There are economic and financial literacy standards, civic standards, history standards, and geography standards. And the standards actually are written a lot more broad. It's things like for history, understands cause and effect of historical events. So it doesn't tell us at any particular grade level that we have to teach certain things.
Let me point out that in our current political environment, there are people who are trying to rewrite US history. And for our kids to be civic life-ready, I think they need to know and understand US history thoroughly from the Constitution forward. Especially the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. And if we only visit that in middle school, I think we're not serving our children well by preparing them to be thinking, to prepare them to think for themselves against the barrage of information that people are putting out there because they want to rewrite history.
Yeah, and I know that the government course sophomore year, I was, that one talks, goes into foundations of government, but I don't know the depth, so I'm happy to look into that.
Thank you. And...
I was going to ask a question on this. Is this, the way we have this broken out, is this specific to District 205 or is this specific to the state of Illinois?
So the state of Illinois standards now are more disciplined and they're not, they don't tell us exactly what to teach each grade level. Especially when you get into the upper grades, the younger grades are more, you can see they focus more on like my social world, roles and responsibilities in a community. But then when you get into those upper grades, the standards become just a lot more general in terms of understanding like perceptions of different groups and their impact on history. And so districts can make that decision as long as they're following the ISB guidance in terms of the specific things that we have to cover.
Okay, can I go back? Because I'm trying to get to, I'm trying to understand your question. So then the, so I know another social study teacher in another high school. And their rollout looks very similar to what I see in high school, 9th through 12. And I guess I'm trying to understand, I mean, is that pure coincidence?
It might be. I wonder if other districts, so my understanding, because this happened, you know, two years ago, was that the big idea was to make the shift so that we could actually get to modern history. It's really scary for me to think that 2000 is actually history because it feels like yesterday, but to our students today, it is history. And so prior to making this shift, the, I was, it was my understanding that they were only learning up until the civil rights movement in US history. And so now quarter four in US history is the modern, like the 80s, the 90s, and then the 2000s. Does that make sense?
If I can, my information comes from, so I have a junior and it comes from Curriculum Night at York. And the way my daughter's teacher explained it is that the approach now is, and Michelle, please correct me if I misrepresent anything here.
Okay.
But that it's, the state now has thematic standards. So they have, you know, I'm making this number up, maybe five thematic inquiries for the first semester and another five for the second semester. And the district, we have divided up Civil War through 2000 and for high school and, you know, the forming of the nation through the Civil War for middle school. We have done that. That's our own, what the state requires is that they thematically look at these topics through history, like the women's movement and the way women are treated throughout history. According to our history, you know, teacher, you could, you could have started at the founding of the country and gone through 2000. But, you know, we've just arbitrarily divided it up. And I think for high school kids to go back and look at the founding of this nation and what that took and makes better citizens than having a kid, the last time they looked at that, they were in seventh or eighth grade. Or really for us, what, sixth grade.
Right, it's part of the government curriculum. But like I said, I don't know the depth, so I'm happy to look into that.
I would appreciate it. You know, at least, you know, my sample of one kid took, you know, AP US Government her sophomore year and still felt junior year that that revisit back to the Revolutionary War would help her.
Well, maybe if that information gets to us, then we can maybe discuss if we want to have a bigger conversation at some point about that.
Sounds good.
Does that work?
That would work. Just promise we would come back and revisit and make some decisions.
All right, Margaret?
So thank you for that breakout of information. A couple of questions. You implemented sixth grade thus far. Can you share any of the feedback that you've gotten from teachers on how that implementation has gone? Lessons learned, things that they would like to change?
Yeah, so one of the biggest pieces of feedback that I got from sixth grade teachers was that they didn't get their custom collection early enough to really be able to dive into it before the start of the school year. They felt good about the standards that they were teaching. They felt good about like the content, they understood it. But they were like a little bit frustrated by not getting the materials on time. So now I've worked with Newzella this year to make sure we get our custom collection sooner so that seventh grade is in a different spot. So they felt like, and they've liked the Newzella. They have felt like they could use some additional resources. And so we've also been working with Newzella in terms of that to be able to add in more videos or more pictures, not just articles.
So also kind of building on that, understand, love the ideal inquiry-based. I'm trying to think of it from a practical perspective on reviewing the process over the summer or getting trained, and maybe I'm not understanding, getting trained on it over the summer and then it's being implemented in the school year?
Okay, sorry, the actual use of Newzella is what they were trained on in the summer.
So all the curriculum is built significantly before then? Is that a correct statement or no?
So we're in the process, so for seventh grade, for example, we're in the process of developing the curriculum right now. So we identified the reporting standards. We unpacked the reporting, the new reporting standards. We've written proficiency scales about those reporting standards in order to help us, you know, assess them. And then now the next step is writing assessments and collecting evidence. And then once we get our custom collection from Newzella, then we'll be able to plan like the day-to-day learning plan.
So when, I know the curriculum team is doing a lot of work now. When would the teachers be able to begin to plan, do their lessons plan, lesson planning for the new, for the seventh grade, for example?
Yeah, so, okay, I might not have the date exactly right, but they, the Unit 1 custom collection, Newzella said they would have that to me by April 30th. So then during the time I meet with them in May, they'll be able to start digging into that Unit 1. And then they're going to deliver the last of them to me by June 1st so that when we have summer work time, they're able to develop the day-to-day, the day-to-day plans during that summertime so that we're in a better place to start the year.
And I don't want you to feel like I'm picking on you. I just, I'm just trying to go through, I know we're coming up on a, we're going to now learn about the Science Curriculum Plan. And I am assuming, but I'll wait to hear, that the Science Curriculum Plan has the same or a similar timeline. So I'm beginning to get a little concerned about how we fit everything into the timeframe that we have to make sure that teachers, especially those teachers in, you know, I'm just going to say K through 5, who may teach more than one subject, are able to manage all of those pieces.
Completely. So K through 5, they, we surveyed them. And they decided to go with full implementation of science for next year and optional implementation of social studies. Because we did get feedback from teachers that said, "Please, if we're ready, like let us do the new social studies." And so everybody at K 5 will do the science and then social studies will have the option. And so the teachers that want to do social studies will do training for them in the summertime. It's separate for middle school because those teachers only teach. You know what I mean? Like they only have to get ready for their subject. So does that help answer your question?
And this is not a question for you.
Okay.
This is a question more for the cabinet. How are we coordinating all our projects so we have, we don't have overlap? And we're not hitting our teachers, our staff, with too many things at one time? So what's the process in coordinating all of the initiatives, which may be excellent and worthwhile? But how are we managing those and prioritizing those?
I'll just have an introductory comment and see what Nikki would like to say if she wants to elaborate. But in the old days, I guess, your curriculum cycle was basically when it was your turn to buy a textbook. And then you'd sit around and pick out your textbook. Now the curriculum is the standards. And so in a professional learning communities model, curriculum work is essentially ongoing all the time. But what we needed to do, starting several years ago, was to try to catch up with getting our curriculum aligned with the state standards that students are being tested on. And so there was a process of ELA, math, science, and social studies. And what we did is, the initial ELA implementation was not exactly smooth. And so we had to recalibrate. And so we pushed everything back. And then when we started science, and Dave can speak to this, we realized that there were not a lot of good resources, or at least in our opinion, were not a lot of really good resources to support those standards out there. And we didn't want to, we didn't want to stress our teachers out to a greater degree. And so we spread that science implementation out over multiple years. And we also, last year, pushed back the social studies implementation to better refine things like workshop ma, model, Eureka Math implementation, and understanding of the standards and the standards-based learning. So we had an initial, kind of an initial concept. And we've adjusted every year. And a lot of those adjustments have been based on teacher feedback. And so when we had some concerns about whether or not we could implement in both science and social studies in the same year, that's when we asked the teachers, and we're basically doing this based on the feedback that they gave us. So Nikki, would you care to go into any greater detail on that?
I mean, just a little bit. I think you did a nice job of describing it. We find ourselves in a situation where we're playing catch-up in some of our areas, social studies being one of them, but then also knowing that our teachers are starving for the new science. And so, you know, as the lead on our team, I took some pause when I started to think about the ask that we were going to be doing for our K 5 teachers with new science and new social studies. And so that's when we decided to conduct a survey to ask them what their thoughts and ideas were about what they wanted. And we used, to Dr. Moyer's point, we used that feedback to determine what we were going to do for next year. Something that we're doing this spring is that we're going to provide each K 5 teacher and group of teachers. So kindergarten will all have the opportunity to meet with Dave Beatty and Michelle to have some pre-learning so that they don't come in the fall and have their new units dumped in their laps. They'll be able to plan for those units of instruction over the summer if they would like or in the spring before they go home. So, and something else that I've been doing with our, with our directors when I meet with them on a bi-weekly basis is to talk about what are the projects that they're currently working on? What are their priorities? And then putting something on paper for what do they want to do next year? And then put that in front of principals and teachers to determine what is the best way to go about doing that work? And what are we going to prioritize? So that we aren't trying to do so many things at one time and really using the standards as our anchor for everything that we do. So it's not that we're teaching science standards or we're using a science curriculum to teach to the standards. As Dr. Moyer described, the standards are our curriculum. We're just utilizing a new resource to teach to those standards. And when you look, and when you utilize that process through PLCs, it makes everything feel more focused and not all these different things that we're trying to do. And it brings it in and provides focus for our teacher is what our hope is. Does that answer your question, Margaret?
So thank you. So what I heard, and I want to be sure, I did hear a couple of feedback loops in there. So I wasn't aware of that, so that's important. There are feedback loops. Once this curriculum would be developed, then you would take it, you'd take it to the principals and the teachers and talk about this is kind of, these are all of the things that are on slot. And the principals and teachers have the opportunity to give feedback on whether they can accommodate all of these priorities or not. And based off their feedback that you got this year, that's where you came up with the idea of delaying the social studies as an example. The social studies curriculum in K through 5. So they wouldn't have, or not delaying it, making it optional. The social studies curriculum from K through 5. So they wouldn't have all of these pieces at the same time.
Correct.
Correct, because we got off track last year. So last year should have been, or this year should have been K 5's first year for social studies and then the pilot year for science. But because we got off track, that means that next year would be the first year for social studies and science. And again, we had, you know, that made me nervous to think about how we could ask our teachers to do that. And it's also a heavy lift for the Learning and Teaching Department. That's not really the big concern. That's not really the big concern. The big concern is the ask of the teachers. And so we came up with, I think, three or four different scenarios where we put a survey together to say, do you want to implement both science and social studies? Yes or no? If you want science first or what, you want social studies first? And we took all of that feedback and we, full transparency, shared all of the feedback with the teachers and the principals to show them what they said to us so that they would know that we did indeed take their feedback in making this decision.
That's great to hear because sometimes I don't feel like that's being communicated out. That, I don't feel like, that, I don't hear that the teachers are getting this feedback and they're making the choices and they're, they're getting those choices. Maybe in the parents, it feels like it's not a, it's not a shared process. But I hear from you guys that this is a shared process, that they are getting feedback and they're making these choices. And they're in agreement with this choice, is the direction that we're going and the speed of the, of the direction, of the process we're going.
Sure. I would say it's something that we're trying to be better and better each year. You know, I've had some learning opportunities, both in my previous positions, but then also in this one, where I thought that I knew what people needed and wanted. So we are being very careful and systematic in our approach with every decision that we make to make sure that we're getting all stakeholders' feedback involved. And to the point of when I meet with the directors, I'm asking them to start thinking about how are they going to get student input and feedback about what we're doing and how we're doing it? So that as we move forward and make changes to curriculum or resources moving forward, we're taking student input as well. But at K-5, the whole reason that we started the implementation of CSOW and have had such success with it is because we surveyed the parents to ask them what gaps and holes they were and what concerns they had about standards-based learning and reporting. And that was the biggest feedback piece to the parents' concern earlier, was that parents didn't see those artifacts coming home and didn't know what their students were working on. And now that we've implemented CSOW K-5, parents feel much more in the loop. And I've even heard from some of the board members that you would agree with that. So that was based off of feedback from a parent survey that we created. Based off of last board meeting, when we talked about standards-based learning, it became very apparent to me that we need to create a survey for our 6th grade parents as well so that we can gather their feedback to see how they feel, what's working, and what we need to continue to work on to better communicate what we're doing and why we're doing it. So to answer your question, Margaret, I would say it's something that we've done in pieces and pockets previously, but it's something that we're implementing in everything that we do moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
A quick one. Easy, easy. It's a softball, which is a famous last words. The Newzella and the Myon Reader, the resources that you're using at elementary and middle school, are those resources that parents can and students can access at home to reinforce the learning that's going on in the classroom? Because I think that piece where parents don't feel like they really know enough, like I, when my kids come home and say, I have no hallmark, I'm like, okay, do you want to do Zern? I mean, so I think that are those resources that the kids can bring home with them to reinforce what's learning on in the classroom?
Good question. Myon, definitely yes.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I was just going to say, I'm not 100% sure about Newzella, but Myon definitely is accessible.
I'll check on Newzella.
And I think parents would appreciate that, just knowing that they can not only help the kids reinforce what they're learning in the school day, but that they can also have some kind of idea of what's going on in the classroom during their day.
Definitely.
Michelle, for the CDT, the membership across different schools, different grade levels, is that the composition?
Yes.
And so they're from, they're involved in the process, so they're, they know it. They probably would teach professional development, if you will. So then my question goes to, what is the rollout to all of the staff?
So at K-5, they'll be training for teachers that want to do the optional adoption in the summertime and then training for all the teachers in the third trimester of next year prior to full implementation in '21, '22. At the K through 8 level, almost every social studies teacher is a part of the CDT, but the ones that are not have had the opportunity to go to like outside professional development about the C3 standards and inquiry-based learning. And also some of the department chairs have done some of that learning in their department meetings, too.
All right, so it's a, if they're part of the CDT, they definitely get it.
Right, that was their, they got that learning two years ago.
Right, okay. And then it's optional in the summer for other teachers like K through 5?
The ones that are going to implement. And then it won't be optional for the, for everybody when we head into full implementation.
How will we get everybody trained?
Yeah.
And then we also utilize our institute days for that work. So when they come back in the fall, we have curriculum development updates where all the departments get to meet in their, in their individual departments to talk about if it's new resources or if we rewrote proficiency scales, what that work looks like. And then I will actually back up a little bit. Typically what happens in, when they come back in the fall, that, we share that information with them for the first time. But something that we're going to do this summer is we're doing that work the first, second, first and second week of, sorry, last week of May, first week of June, and then a week, I believe in August, I can't remember. And then as soon as that work is completed, we will be sharing that out with all teachers so that if they want to take a look at it over the summer, they have the ability to do that. So they're not walking in cold in the fall.
Yeah, I'm just getting a sense, I'm thinking about the K through 5 where, you know, we've got the ELA, the math, like the Eureka math, technology, social studies, science, all those things. And there's only a limited amount of time and the letting teachers know ahead of time about planning their summer.
And that's one of the things that I'm most excited about is because, we haven't talked about what we're going to do for the learning next year for teachers, but we're going to be looking at giving those institute days back to the buildings, if you will, with support from the learning and teaching department. So for example, I would say Hawthorne has been implementing standards-based learning for an extra Hawthorne and Field. So they may be in a different place with unpacking standards and their proficiency scales and identifying pieces of evidence. So they may be ready for something different than what another building is ready for. So we're really looking to differentiate the learning and the, the ability to do the work that they feel like they need to do instead of us telling them, we're all going to do this one thing. We're going to focus on the standards, we're going to focus on unpacking the standards, and we're going to focus on identifying the resource to teach to those standards and to assess them. But each building will be able to do that based on where they are and each individual grade level as well.
One last question is about when you talk about teachers have the option to adopt this this year versus next year. What will it mean for students? I mean, what does it look like before, after, and does that matter? I'm thinking it does, but I'm ignorant about it.
So I think the teachers are working hard to plan engaging lessons and, you know, teach the standards regardless. The new learning standards will, will be taught as a part of the new curriculum and those won't totally be implemented until all the teachers implement the new curriculum. But the teachers are working hard, just like they are this year, using the, you know, the old curriculum to teach engaging social studies lessons.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you, Michelle. Okay, next we have science curriculum implementation update. Mr. Beatty.
Sorry, I'm coming with a cold here. I know, perfect timing. I'm trying not to touch anything.
Back them up.
Yeah. I'm the last one to go, right? Anybody else going after me? Oh, sorry about that. Okay, so, yeah, I'm not touching it. So we're talking about science. We've been talking about social study for so long, I'm sitting in this chair and I'm like, oh my gosh, when am I going to? I know, that's what I'm hoping. I'm hoping, right, all the, all the hard questions came out after social studies. So, but before I get started with any of the things here, and I'm looking at the clicker, like, should I be touching that or should someone else be? We have some wipes, maybe we can use. One of the things I want to point out is that I think there is a lot-
You were taking cough medicine before the-
Absolutely. All of them. Let's keep going, let's do this. 10 minutes I got, right? Burning the time.
There's a minute already.
Right. So one thing I want to point out is that there's a lot of connections between the curriculum changes that are occurring because the way the standards at the state level and the national levels are all very much thinking in the same direction. The people who are building the C3, the people who are building next-gen science standards, I think the people who built the Common Core, they were all having these same ideas about kids learning through inquiry, kids learning by doing, I love the discovery, not delivery that Michelle mentioned. And I would say that we've been doing professional learning with teachers around science for the last three years. And everything that works, whenever we go and do some learning around the next-gen science standards, we get the same messages that we want kids to be learning, we want kids to learn science by actually being scientists, if that makes sense, right? So it's the same thing. We want kids to learn social studies by actually engaging with their community, right? We don't want them to sit in a classroom and hear a teacher telling them about science. We want them to actually think about engaging what we're going to call phenomena in science and think about, how can we figure this out? What are the things we need to do to figure this out on our own? And that's the whole point of all of these curricular changes, K-12. We're talking about K tonight, but we're also doing work, 9-12, around the same ideas. So, learning, teaching pri, did I skip one? Okay, I had a different order. Learning, teaching priorities, so we're talking about curriculum resources, we're also talking about instruction here. Those are two of our main priorities here in the learning and teaching team. These are district-level supports that then support what happens in, in classrooms with kids. Specifically, the curriculum materials we're building here are for, to help classroom teachers with their, with their instruction with students. A lot of the things that we're looking at adopting in science are actually student-facing materials as well. And this, what I'm going to be talking about is, is different from what Michelle was talking about in that we are looking at like fully baked resources that bring with them curricular units. So these are not things we have been building on our own. We tried that and it was going to take us a really, really long time. We started, we got our first units at the middle school level under our belt, we piloted those, we did all that work. And at the end, we're like, okay, that was a lot. And we really want to see again where, are there good units out there? Are there resources now, like Dave mentioned before, when we started this journey, there were not good NGSS fully-aligned units? There's a lot of people out there that are going to, that want to sell you something that put NGSS, you know, alignment slapped on the cover of their textbook, but it's not fully aligned. So in doing that work, we're now at a place for science where we're like, we're going to actually adopt fully baked units because they exist. NGSS came out before C3, so we're probably looking at a few more years for C3 standards to actually get to this place where we're at with NGSS now. So, you know, I wish we were able to do maybe some of the, some of the things for social studies as we are able to now for science, but we were in the same, we were definitely in the same place. So how this has worked, we've been doing this 6-12 for a few years now, but K-5, we started last summer. So K-8 really started, you know, started last summer, but the 6-8 portion has been going for the last few years. We created those, the K5 teams last year in order to do training last summer, in order to do work this fall. The 6-8 teams have been together for at least a few years now. We did a lot of training with next-gen science. We partnered with outside agencies to actually do that training. People actually wrote the standards, are the people that trained our teachers. So I think that's a really powerful connection between like what's actually happening at the national level and what's happening with our own teachers. We are, we identifying potential core resources. We did that work early on in the summer and, and then we piloted them. And now we're at the place where we're thinking about what is it that adoption looks like. We did a lot of feedback for those core resources in terms of the pilot. And so we use that in order to make the recommendations that we're making tonight. After we do this, the adoption, which isn't going to take place until the actual adoption in April, we'll put the resources up in March, then we're going to actually develop the instructional components around those units. So how does that actually look in our classrooms, right? That's the piece that comes in this develop units of instruction. The actual curricular units are built already for all of the units we're talking about tonight. We're also going to be training every other teacher. And we're going to do that through a couple of touchpoints between now and the beginning of next school year, but continuing throughout next school year as well. And then we'll be, you know, implementing that through the new curriculum throughout the next year and then, you know, beyond. So what does that look like? Well, at the elementary level, we actually piloted two resources. We piloted Amplify Science and we piloted Mystery Science. We're going, we would like to recommend Mystery Science. And both are standards-aligned. Both were designed from the perspective of NGSS. They weren't previous things that were then transformed into something new because of NGSS. They were built upon it. They're both what I called phenomenon-based, which is this idea that we actually start with something that's going on in the world and the kids are asking questions about that thing and we're actually investigating those questions. But that's what this means by phenomenon-based. Students are figuring it out. Their, the Mystery Science is very hands-on. Basically, every single lesson that students are doing, there's some components that they're, they're thinking with their hands. Another key component of why we chose Mystery Science is that it fits into the time that we have for science at the elementary level, which was a, which is a difficult thing. And then also, another thing about Mystery Science is a lot of our teachers are actually already using it. It's been a free resource for a few years. And so a lot of our teachers in the district have already reached out and started using some of those materials as early as last year, I think, was the first year that we were, that we were starting to do that. But a lot of our teachers are already familiar with Mystery Science and what that looks like. We're going to fully resource it. We're going to make sure they have all the materials coming to them in the kits, just like we do now. So they'll have everything at their fingertips when we implement. For middle school, we're looking at Amplify Science. We actually just took a team to Kansas City to do some more investigations with Amplify Science. Amplify Science is written by the Lawrence Hall of Science, which is a UC Berkeley sub-place, I don't know exactly what it's called, but it's, it's housed through UC Berkeley. That, the Lawrence Hall of Science is who developed all of the materials. Amplify is the company that's, that produces and gets those materials out to people. So it's called Amplify Science, but it's really the Lawrence Hall of Science from UC Berkeley's program. And it's also built on top of the standards. They started after those standards came out. It's again phenomenon-based, just like Mystery Science is. And it contains a lot of really rich digital simulations which help our middle school students dig deep into concepts that they can't touch. As you get into the higher grades in science, you start to get into things that are very difficult to actually manipulate on a table. So things like ecosystems, like we can play a game where I'm a bird and I'm carrying seeds around, you know, and I'm like doing all these things. And that's great. And at the elementary level, I think it works because you have, the concepts are not as complex. But when you get to the middle school level, we actually want kids to experience those things in much more real ways. And to do that, we actually have to dig into computer simulations or models. And that's exactly actually how scientists predict and do their work is with computer simulations in general, not as much of like, I'm sitting in a room playing with things with my hands, which maybe we get the mad scientist vibe in our heads. But there's a lot of those digital simulations in the middle school resources for Amplify which help us, helps us dig into those concepts more deeply. And there are hands-on components to the Amplify. It's not that they're absent, it's just that there might be fewer than some of our teachers and parents and kids might have experienced in the past. And so that's something we're going to get on top of communication-wise and make sure that everyone's aware of so they're not, we're not caught flat-footed when all of a sudden it's like, where are all the hands-on activities? It used to be that every day we were doing these hands-on activities and we don't see those as often anymore. But again, the idea behind this is, it's not about taking away hands-on, it's about making sure that we're able to dig into these ideas into, into the depth that they really deserve at the middle school level. So with that said, I've brought some teachers with me. So this is Elizabeth Kawa. She's a 2nd grade teacher at Emerson and she's going to tell us a little bit about what it's been like to pilot these materials in 2nd grade.
Hello. So Dave already introduced me, but I teach 2nd grade at Emerson. When I first heard that we were going to be piloting Mystery Science this school year, I was immediately excited. excited. Last school year, my team had tried out a few of the modules, and our students really enjoyed them. I knew that the opportunity to dig deeper into this resource was going to be a great opportunity for my students. This is my seventh year in the district, and I've never witnessed students more engaged in science than this year. It got to the point where my students would actually be upset if we didn't have science on the schedule. They would even ask to take something else out so that we could do more science. I never thought I'd actually hear my students asking to do more science. This year, we emphasize the following beliefs. We figure out the science ideas. We figure out where we're going at each step. And we figure out how to put the ideas together. The NGSS standards focus on inquiry-based learning. Students are most engaged when we honor their thinking. They are the ones who are figuring out what to do with the information and where we are learning and where we'll go next. Teachers must use student ideas as the driving force behind their lessons, and Mystery Science allowed us to do that. In one example, my students were studying the phases of matter. I wanted my students to understand what happened to the properties of matter when an object was heated or cooled. Through the support and guidance of Mystery Science's engaging videos, my students were the ones who designed our experiment. They were the ones who chose exactly what we were going to do. In fact, they were the ones who chose to use hair dryers to heat and cool different types of candy. They outlined the steps that we would take to complete the experiment. In the end, we may have blown a fuse from using all the hair dryers at once, but my students were able to explain the properties of matter better than I would have ever have imagined. With Mystery Science, students no longer are passive learners. Instead, they're actively engaged in discovering new science ideas. The videos, discussions, and the hands-on learning experiences that are included really allow them to not only explain what we're working on, but also helps them to understand the why of what we're doing. We all remember those great learning activities and experiences we had when we were in school. We learned things that we will never forget. Mystery Science's hands-on and engaging activities are allowing our students to create some of those same experiences each and every day. Thanks.
All right. And we have Jeanette Kling, who teaches kindergarten at Jefferson.
Hello. Those are my kindergarteners that you see there in the slide. And we had the opportunity to pilot the Mystery Science weather unit last fall. The weather unit was a lot of fun for the kindergarten students because they got to practice behaviors that scientists and engineers engage in by becoming weather watchers. They made observations to determine the effect of sunlight on the earth's surface. They used tools and materials to design and build a structure to increase the warming effect of sunlight on an area. And they shared observations of weather conditions to describe weather patterns over time. And those are all kindergarten next-generation science standards. Not all of the standards, but the ones that were addressed in the weather unit. On the slide here, you can see that the kindergarteners were collaborating with a partner to carry out an investigation to test which material they could use to redirect the sunlight, which was the lamp, over, to reach over the paper, which represented mountains, and to heat up various locations drawn on the shaded areas of the paper maps, which is what you can kind of see on the right side there. After testing the materials, they worked together to design a solution to increase the temperature and the amount of sunlight a shaded area receives. The videos that were included in the Mystery Science, in Mystery Science were a great way to hook the students' attention. The narrator, Doug, which all the kids came to know very well, begins each one by posing a low-threshold question that all students have enough background knowledge about to be able to engage in a discussion with their peers, which is not necessarily easy with five-year-olds. Doug then introduces the science behind the initial question and raises the level of thinking by challenging the students to further investigate the NGSS core ideas. Throughout the investigations, the children demonstrated perseverance by making multiple attempts to solve problems. They had many opportunities to work cooperatively with each other and to take turns, to listen attentively, and think flexibly. Overall, Mystery Science was a great resource that engaged some of the youngest learners in our district by challenging them to think critically like scientists. And it was also easy to create interdisciplinary learning opportunities using the NGSS standards with the beginning-of-the-year kindergarten reading and writing units that all kind of meshed together nicely. So, it was really fun to teach this unit, and we're excited about next year.
Thank you, Jeanette. And we have Anthony Peterson, who teaches eighth grade at Churchill Middle School. He's also our department chair at Churchill for Science.
Hello. Thank you. I don't have anything written formally, but I can tell you, I was in Kansas City last week with Dave and some other teachers. And it was really good to see the phenomenon-based learning and how it lines up with NGSS. This is one of our, one of the simulations that I piloted last year, which was metabolism. So, it starts off with a question about what is making a particular young girl so sick. And so, that question kind of is guiding us throughout the entire lesson. And we watch videos on it. We do some different types of evidence. And you can kind of model and change around the simulation to see what exactly is wrong with her, given some other types of diseases. It was really good to see the kids interact. I liked seeing them not on like a Google website, just something that they could use throughout the Amplify unit. So, overall, I was really impressed with it. And I'm really looking forward to the new units that we are looking to do in the years coming. So, thank you.
So, I just want to thank Elizabeth, Jeanette, and Anthony again for coming and sharing their time with us tonight. It's a long, long day for them, for sure, having to come and, and share that with you guys. But I felt like that it was something that we needed. We need to have, you know, that, that perspective on what's going on. So, with that, the next steps are, what we're planning on doing for the, for the rest of this year and next year and the summer is thinking through standard, reporting standards, making sure that those are aligned with NGSS, aligned with our instructional units, writing proficiency scales, making sure that our assessments match up with those reporting standards and proficiency scales, and then doing professional learning for teachers starting in May. So, we do have some things cooking in terms of how we're going to make sure all teachers are going to get the professional learning that they need, starting at the end of this year, and then continuing through next year. And that's all I got. So, open the floor to you guys.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank the teachers because, you know, when you are willing to step out and try something different, it's extra work, and you have to put more time into it. That's actually how the whole district grows, is through you being willing to try new things. So, thank you for that and, you know, giving feedback and, you know, evaluating things because that's how we grow. And, you know, I have a freshman in college, and I've won a new science here since she was in kindergarten. So, this is like awesome. So, thank you. So, I just wanted to say that before we ask Dave questions. You're not done. But thank you. So, questions?
I just wanted to say that with both the social studies and the science curriculum, I just really like how through the inquiry-based learning, everybody is involved. And sometimes I feel like we've seen these two subjects as either you like it or you don't. You know, you like social studies or you don't like social studies. You like science or you don't. This kind of gets everybody involved. They can look at a piece of the topic that interests them. And I just really love to see all the kids engaged and, and involved in what they're learning about it and excited about it. So, thank you.
So, again, I really want to thank, I want to thank Dave and Michelle. And I also really want to thank the teachers because that makes a big difference, to hear it from your voices saying, this is why I think it's important. It may be, you know, a little extra work, but it's important and it's worth it. So, I think that's really important, that we hear those voices. So, if we hear something different, we can say, no. Question for you, Dave. You mentioned, before I go there, I also love the idea of this inquiry-based learning. Absolutely. No one is ever questioning that. But I think what we also understand is, the devil is in the details. And the details and how it's implemented is, that's the piece that I'm asking about. And I want to be sure I understand it. So, our community can understand it. You mentioned about fully baked curriculum units. Can you tell me a little bit about what that is and what that means to day-to-day, what that means for day-to-day lesson planning?
Absolutely. So, at first, I want to, I actually think that what, one of the things Michelle brought to the table here this morning, or this evening, gosh, it feels like the morning already, is the student voice. Through the videos, like I really, I like that. It was not, not something I thought to do, but it was an awesome idea to bring the student voice into it. Why not? We got, we got both sides, right? We got students and we got teachers. How about that? Now, how do we, okay, so, that is a fantastic question. There are so many factors that come into play when it comes to actually taking this piece of paper or, you know, this thing on a computer screen and actually getting that into a classroom and making sure that that is what's actually, you know, going on, right? Or what's, what students are actually experiencing. And so, that involves professional learning for teachers, which is happening. That is, that involves professional learning for school leaders, which is also happening. That involves outside connections to organizations that are, that are not us, right? That includes other districts. When we were doing professional learning with our, with our science teams, we were actually partnering with other districts at the time. We had Downers Grove was partners with this value view. And we were all learning together with this, this NGSS group that helped write the standards. So, all of those pieces coming together, I think, and there's, there are more than that. So, it's, it's all those pieces coming together that actually makes this a reality in the classroom. I think one of the things that is nice about what we chose, the things we chose. First, teachers had voice in the, in the process about what we were looking at, right? What, what do these things look like? How are they, how are we using them in the classroom? And so, making sure that those materials were going to work. And in fact, I would say that the reason why we went with Mystery Science instead of Amplify was because of teacher feedback. Mystery Science is a much more user-friendly resource for teachers to get at the things that we're talking about with inquiry than Amplify is at the, at the elementary level. Because of the complexity of the Amplify units, it would have been very difficult for us to implement those at the elementary level in a, in a way that would be good for kids in the short amount of time that we kind of have to get to the place where we're implementing. And so, the fact that Mystery Science is actually, like I see, and, you know, some of our, you know, our teachers here, but also other teachers can attest to, like, how quickly Mystery Science gets assimilated into sort of the day-to-day routine. It is, it's just, it is a, it's a resource that helps guide teachers to do this inquiry-style teaching and for students to do inquiry-style learning, better than I've seen, you know, basically any other resource at the K5 level to be able to do that. And then, through the Leadership Institute that we went to last week for Amplify, we really unlocked some new, you know, levels, if you will, in terms of being able to access and use the Amplify resource that we were not aware of, even though we had had professional learning on what Amplify was and how it works. So, being able to spend more time with the people who wrote it, being able to then take that back. We brought a team of instructional coaches from every building, our department chairs, to go to this leadership training to, so those we look at, go back to their buildings and now be resources for the teachers who are going to be implementing. So, the, the training they're going to receive at the end of this year and then moving into next year, that we have those sort of seeds planted and ready support in our instructional coaches in order to make sure that we're able to do that. So, that we can take the digital curriculum, those curriculum resources that are, you know, words on paper, and really make those things come alive in the classroom. Because, you know, when I talk to teachers about these goals, about, you know, we want students to be figuring things out, that they are all in board. If, you know, anybody who's a science teacher is going to tell you that they want kids to be doing science. That, that is the ultimate goal. And so, people are really excited about that. And the resources we have and the way we've gone about sort of preparing supports in the buildings in order to be able to do that, I think is, and the resources we chose is really going to help support that implementation into the next school year. But it's also something we're going to monitor, right? So, it's something we want to, we want to actually look at and see. Is this happening? When we go into classroom, what are the look-for's? That's part of the professional learning for, for school leaders. I want to make sure the principals, when they walk into classrooms, know what they're looking for. Because you can inadvertently squash new attempts at, at curriculum if you have leaders in buildings that don't know how to recognize what that new learning looks like. So, we want, that's part of this. And so, there are tools that we'll be using to help train our administrators to make sure that they can take a look and see what's going on and help give teachers feedback to, to improve that over time. So, that's all part of the, of this process, going through the end of the school year and into, into next school year, in order to make it come alive.
So, you brought up the idea of monitoring. Love it. So, you're implementing it this year. Is there a plan to have feedback, get feedback, end of this year to say what went well, what didn't go well, how it was integrated into the system, so we can continue to improve?
Great. So, we didn't have principals collecting that feedback this year, but we did do multiple, we essentially did end-of-unit surveys for our teachers and also for students. And then, we collected that feedback to see, that was part of the resource evaluation process, is we wanted to know, what do teachers think about these resources and also what do students think about these resources? And some of the student responses were amazing. As you might imagine, some of them are very angry that one resource allowed them to, to experiment with candy and another one did not. So, that was part of the feedback that we got from elementary, as you can imagine. But there was also some actually really useful feedback in that as well, coming from students and from teachers. So, it's absolutely part of the process, coming to this point. And we will absolutely be thinking about as we're moving forward, how can we take some of the, you know, the not-so-great feedback about Mystery Science and use that in the process of doing our teacher training and making sure that everyone is ready for next year? Yeah, absolutely.
So, that, that kind of actually plays right into my question. So, these kind of kits or packages that we buy of Amplify Science, we can tweak it based on what's working and not working, is what you're saying? Yes?
So, I think we can, yes, I think we can.
Okay.
But I think we want to be careful.
Yeah.
Right? So, we want to make sure that we're doing the tweaking with integrity to the goals, which are the next-gen science standards. So, that's a really important part of the tweaking process. But yes, there are definitely, teachers will have the freedom to make instructional decisions to make sure that the materials are meeting their students' needs.
And this package that we're going to bring in, that includes all the instruction to not just what we're going to pass off, the materials we're going to give to our students, but instructions on how to teach our teachers and then get our teachers to teach our teachers. And does it include how to teach our teachers to assess what our kids are learning?
Yes.
Like, that assessment piece, you know, as
Yes.
Kind of a hot topic these days. How to make sure our teachers are comfortable in assessing what that package brings to us is, is what, that's all included in what they're giving us?
It is. Would you like to know more?
I would love to know more, Dave.
Okay. So, Amplify, so I'll start there. Amplify, every lesson has formative assessment part of the lesson. So, that's included in the resources that we have, or we will have. Both resources are digital, are fully digital in terms of their student-facing components. There are hands-on things that happen, activities, those kind of things. Those occur, and we'll be providing teachers with those resources. But all the student-facing materials, starting with Amplify, are digital. So, they interact with a digital scientist notebook. They interact with digital simulations. And so, all of that stuff is digital, including any sort of formative assessments, are digital within the Amplify Science platform. So, then teachers are able to look at those things coming from students on their computer screens whenever they are available to do that, whether it's during a planning period, PLC meetings, they could pull up student work like this and be able to look at what are highs, lows. It's not like I left my papers in at home, or I already turned those back. Like, we have all of that data. It will always be available through that platform. So, as far as that goes, there are formative assessments daily, and then there are also, it comes with summative assessments. Those, those are things that we're going to have, we're going to take a close look at in the first year. I think we're going to use them pretty much as-is. Because in order to change the program with integrity, we have to know it, right? So, we want to make So we want to make sure that we're going to do it the way that it's designed to begin with, and then, once we've done that, then we'll have a better sense of what it is that we can change, and make sure that we're still achieving those goals. With Mystery Science, we also have assessments included. So those are, it's not, it's not a digital assessment, but the assessments are available, and we can do lots of things with those. We can identify which ones we're going to do district-wide, we can print those, just like we do with our math materials. Our teams haven't decided how we're going to approach that yet, but we will have assessments that are district-level assessments that we're going to be using for science, to collect student information about their achievement in science. So we can make sure to look at that over time, like, how are students doing in our classrooms on these standards? Then, how well do they do on the Illinois Science Assessment, and when those things are given, to make sure that our curriculum is well-aligned with what the state's expecting and what we want for our students?
My one question is, you were presenting for K through 8?
Yes.
And then, how about high school?
So, our 912, so we have a biology, a chemistry, and a physics team. Those teams have already built one unit and piloted one unit. They're building their second unit now. We will be piloting their second units next year. But it's, it is a slow process for us in science to build the units in such a way that they're fully resourced, fully, everything is there, ready to go. Because, the instruction of science in this way takes very careful planning. This is not a, here's a cool thing, everybody figure out what you want, and go do it, and have, like, let's all, you know, chaos and anarchy in here. That's what, that's what Inquiry was in, you know, many years ago. But now, what we actually want to do is develop very intentional phenomenon that get kids thinking in a very specific direction. They believe that they're the ones driving the whole thing, right? So it's a careful process of, like, managing this chaos of, we put the right phenomenon in front of them, that gets them thinking in a very specific direction, mostly. They'll definitely have some diverging ideas about different things, but it gets them moving in, in one direction. And then, we, we have planned that out, because we've been carefully, we've carefully designed the unit. So it's, it's a process of designing the phenomenon, putting it in front of kids, seeing what they do. They didn't do what I expected. Okay, back to the drawing board, let's try something else. Okay, oh, this is getting, this is productive, this is getting them to go in the right direction. So that's what we're doing at the high school level, and it's taking more time. So, it's going to, in order to complete that, there are no high school resources that will help, that are going to give us what we need for NGSS alignment. They don't exist, yet. If they ever would exist, we would absolutely jump and grab those things like, you know, you wouldn't believe. But at this point, they don't exist. And so, at this rate, we will be looking at, so next year, we've been, we would be piloting Unit 2. We're looking for four, essentially, they're like quarter-long units. So it's going to be two more years after that, and we're getting the fourth year planned and done, in order for biology, chemistry, physics to be finished.
So you've got a group that's K-8, working with Mystery Elementary Level, Amplify Middle School, and in-house high school?
Yes.
And we're still looking at, I like the assessment connection about making sure that our students are prepared for those tools, I'll say. Assessment tools that the universe is using to see, to, to identify for those outsized, outside beyond District 205 measurements, or acceptance into life, career, college-ready. Okay. So, you said that you're working, it's a UC Berkeley, Lawrence Hall, for Amplify?
Correct.
And something similar, I'm sure, for Mystery?
Yes.
And you also talked about working with people around this area?
Correct.
So are they, they obviously are in the same place for high school?
Correct.
And, so are we teaming together at the high school level?
Yes. And that, that is actually happening. So we have, actually, Lyons Township is developing units also. And so, and they actually are also partnering with other high schools to do the same thing. So we have, and there's essentially this, like, sharing setup that's going on, where we're developing units, other districts are developing units, we're sharing those units. So it's theoretically possible that this will take less time, based on that collaboration across schools. But currently, I don't want to set our, I don't want to set our expectations in a way that we won't, that we will fall short of them. So I don't want to, like, over-promise in terms of how long it's going to take. But I will say that when we finish, our high school units are going to be good, and our kids are going to be very engaged in, in this inquiry-based model.
Help me get a better understanding of what's going on, particularly at elementary school. Can you give me some specific examples of what phenomenon?
Absolutely.
Kids are discovering every day?
Yes.
How they go about discovering those phenomenon?
Yes. So I remember, we've been sharing, so the pilot teams have been putting some of their work on Seesaw, which was spoken about a little bit earlier. And so, I've been kind of spying in on what's, when those, the pictures are coming through and videos. One of the things I can remember clearly is, I think it was actually Elizabeth's class who was investigating why we wear clothes, which is, like, second-grade kids, that's the question, why do we wear clothes? Like, that's, that's where we start. And you can imagine where things go from there, but how engaged those kids are. And then, they start designing clothes for specific environments. So they have to think about materials, and they have to, and they're building those things, and the pictures of them, like, wearing these hats that they had designed for specific kinds of environments, using the materials in the classroom, but they had to actually defend why they used this material versus that material. And the unit was actually about materials. It was about how, I think, it was about how, like, different kinds of materials have different kinds of properties, and how we might use those materials in different ways in this, in this, you know, frame of why do we wear clothes? So that's a one example.
Can I drag Elizabeth up to give the two more?
I don't know, gee.
Thank you.
So you're just looking for an explanation of it?
What are your favorite days? What, what phenomenon do these kids discover, and how do you, how do you go about doing it?
So, basically, for example, when I talked about the candy example, and melting the different, you know, to see the different properties, Mystery Science showed us different videos, just basically, like, things like talking about how, you know, things melt. Another one that went along with it was, can you fry an egg on a sidewalk? And so, we looked to see how things changed when they got hot, how things changed when they got cold. And then, it kind of framed a question for us, which was about, like, how do the materials change? And so, we kind of stemmed from that, and were able to, you know, we had ideas already kind of determined of what we wanted the kids to do, and then, just the questions that we would ask them, is kind of what led them to where we wanted, or led them to get them where we wanted them to go.
Do you, do you go take an egg to the sidewalk?
No, we actually did not take an egg to the sidewalk. We actually, a lot of my kids wanted to know if we can make cookies with, like, the solar ovens and things like that. But, it's actually, it was really interesting just getting to see, like, how, I already knew where I wanted them to go, and just by my questioning, they were able, I was able to get them there without actually, without them thinking that I told them how to do it. So it was all, like, I knew what I wanted them to do, but they discovered it on their own.
Got it. Thank you. That's, that's helpful.
All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you for staying late. Take care. All right. Next is 2020, 2021 Resources Presentation. Nikki.
I did, I touched it. They're leaving, but I do want to say thank you to Dave and to Michelle. They've put a lot of hard work in this year, as you can tell, and for their time tonight to present to you. I know it always is, you know, a highlight for you guys when you get to hear from the directors and the work that they do. I know it was always fun for me when I was their director to, to share that with you. So tonight, Scott and I are here because we are proposing that the board review and consider the following materials for display on March 17th, and approval for the April 8th board meeting. The K-5 MION?
Excuse me. That'd be April 28th.
April 28th. I missed my two.
No, that's okay. I just, just because they have to be on display for 30 days by law, I did, that's the only reason I jumped in, I'm sorry.
No, no. Thank you, Dr. Moyer, I appreciate that. So we talked a little bit about K-5 MION, and it was funny when Dave was talking about why do we wear clothes, because there are three different, I just have to say this because I love MION so much, and I'm excited about the resource. There are three different news articles each day at different levels, and at second grade, one of the articles was, or one of the news stories was, why is P yellow? Who wouldn't want to read about that, right? So those are the kinds of things that they're going to be exposed to by the utilization and implementation of that resource. So we do appreciate you considering it. So MION, the personalized literacy environment, the K-5 Mystery Science online digital resources, the 68 Amplify Science Program that blends on, that blends hands-on investigations, and then Scott's going to talk a little bit about numbers four and five on the memo.
Good evening, everyone. So, the 10th grade AP Government course is requesting a new resource for increased access to their AP studying. This document is a physical resource, and I looked into that further, and the reasoning for that request is that the students have had a challenging time printing out the previous ebook for this, because they wanted to do annotations. A lot of the work with this involves an adjustment to the AP exam in 2018 that included things like an increased focus on primary sources, and the students had an increased need to do a little bit more annotation with the text. So there's that. It's sort of like a workbook format, about 110 pages, and it lends itself to the exam and practicing for that, as well as analysis of the different sources. The other items are related to the York High School English, English, sorry, York High School English Literature novels. Approximately, it looks like we have 11 novels that are put forth for proposal. In English 10, there are eight novels. They have recently adjusted some of their curriculum in a little bit more of an interdisciplinary format, with a focus on the workshop model. So they're trying to sort of revitalize eight novels related to that. They have a course adjustment form that's been included to sort of help spell out, even in more depth, what the texts are, and really kind of how that's going to align to some of the work moving forward. Then there's also English 1 and 4 courses that have one novel each. Those novels are listed. And then, there's a replacement novel for college literacy. It sounds like there is some duplication taking place between a text that some students were reading junior year, and they wanted to make sure that the students had a new experience, so they're recommending a memoir for college literacy.
So, we did provide some very specific information in your packet, just to ensure that you had all the information necessary in order to approve these resources for display, and then ultimately, board approval for purchasing. And they will be on display as the board policy for 30 days, with looking to have them approved for purchase at that April board meeting that Dr. Moyer referenced. Can we answer any questions for you this evening?
So I noticed in the, thank you, guys. I noticed in the, the Mystery kind of invoice, there's that initial cost, and then there's an annual cost, and I didn't see that same thing in the Amplify one. Is there not an annual cost to keep those kits up to date?
Correct. So Mystery Science is the cost of $63,000 something over the period of three years. It's a significantly less expensive resource than Amplify, which is why the numbers are different.
So the Amplify is, I thought it was just an 18-month period? Is that not right? Did I read that incorrectly?
I honestly don't know. Dave Beatty would know much better than myself, so let me flip through here and find it. What he would be?
I guess I'm asking, so the, let's start with the Mystery one?
Sure.
That $24,000 includes a $12,000 annual cost, and then a one-time cost of $12,000. So, that's for the first year, and then you're adding $12,000 on for a three-year period, is, is, is I guess what you're talking about? But then, the Amplify, it kind of indicates it's just for an 18-month period, for $230,000?
But, that's actually till 2026, is my understanding. I'm not super knowledgeable with the actual pricing of it, but I know that one is significantly more expensive, because I think we're licensed all the way to 2026 for it.
And I guess I'm looking at that 18 months about the services they provide. So I guess I, I don't understand what the services are that are limited to 18 months versus the license that goes till 2026.
So the license would be the digital license for continued online use for the assessments and continued digital tools. The other part is actually getting the materials and having the kits.
Okay.
The Mystery Science materials are significantly less expensive, but once we purchase them, there will be a, a small fee in the student fees, I think of a couple dollars. I just did those fees this week, and I can't remember how much it was, but, to, to keep the kits ongoing.
So this $230 for Amplify covers us until 2026?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? Oh, Jim?
Can you tell me, or tell everybody who's interested, where these materials will be on display, and how they, where they need to come, if they want to take a look at them?
Sure. I'm going to work with David Smith. This is something that I haven't done before, nor has Scott, so we're going to work with David Smith to find a place at district office where they will be displayed, so that community members and yourself will have access to MION, all of the resources that we're describing. They will be here at district office.
Somebody just come in and talk to the receptionist.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, on the 17th, when we ask for the vote to display them, we'll make sure that we can explain exactly how people can access them.
I wanted to thank Nikki. I asked her a question about, are we, not necessarily specific to the, these courses, but a bigger picture, you know, general educational leadership, purview of our courses. Because there's a lot of people that change things, and I wanted to make sure, do we look at it globally and assess what are we still teaching, and what are we, what, what might we be missing, so that we can keep our heads on, you know, atop of that? One in particular is like the liberal arts education, the philosophy, the literature, the in-depth, you know, materials that you really, they're tough reads, and they're tough, you know, all the inquiry-based and everything that we're bringing into the system, even at elementary level, you know, were really brought out in some of those literature checks. And I just wanted to make sure that we're still keeping that level of rigor, critical thinking, diverse thought, and the materials that are conducive to that really depth of working with students, and helping them, you know, critically think in that context, form their own thoughts, which I think gets to some of the things that, you know, Jim was bringing up from a social studies standpoint. And I think that's invaluable. So I wanted to make sure that we are still looking at those things. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is the Thrive D-205 update.
So I have put this item on the agenda to basically inform you that there's nothing to update until the next board meeting. But the various subcommittees are meeting, and the whole committee, the entire committee will meet within the next two weeks to prepare for a presentation on March 17th, and that will include the information from We Surveys, Thought Exchange, the academic policies that we're looking to bring forward, and any updates that we have from the Start Times discussion. A week or two ago, the one thing we do have that's new information, is that a week or two ago, we did get some preliminary information on increased bus costs associated with some of the draft schedule possibilities that we presented. And I listed those numbers on the document. And the MTSS is really related to the Student Services Subcommittee on Thrive D-205, so you had a presentation on that at the D-205. So you had a presentation on that at the committee of the whole meeting, and we probably won't go into a lot of that as part of Thrive D-205 from this point going forward because it's really mostly directly related to the MTSS work. And a lot of those people on the committees are duplicate, you know, they duplicate their efforts to try to help inform the Thrive conversation, but at this point, that purpose has kind of been served. So those are, those are some of the things that are going to be going on over the next couple of weeks, but you will get a much more detailed update on the work of that committee on March 17th.
I wanted to know if you, when you're, when you are reporting out, is there a way for the administration to share or report on what is already happening for our students? Because, you know, we're gathering a lot of feedback through, you know, we're doing focus groups and surveys, but I think something that, you know, maybe if you don't have a student involved in the district, or if you aren't aware, is there a way for you to share what is actually already being done, what supports are there for our students so that then we have that as a board, as a, I don't know, a starting point for, and a, you know, understanding what's already being done for our students?
Sure. We talked about that this morning at Cabinet, and a lot of that has been compiled through some of the work of the MTSS Committee. And so we have a really good starting point. And Scott is going to run that past the principals at the next two grade-level principal meetings to try to certify the extent to which that's accurate for certain purposes as it relates to the MTSS work, but there also could be other things that are going on that would be pertinent to your particular question, and we want to capture that. And then we can, we can share that with everybody, and you can use that as a resource, and we can make sure that you have a good understanding of the things that we're already doing.
Anything else with Thrive? Margaret?
So I just wanted to ask about, last week, we had the internal consultant, we approved the, I'm sorry, we approved the external consultant last week. And then there was also a discussion in the board about some of the benefits of having, using internal, the existing D-205 team. And I'm wondering how, or if there are ways to integrate the, this external consultant and utilize this internal team, D-205 team also, in the data collection process?
So Bev, can you explain how that's looking with, Bev's coordinating a lot of that work?
Yes. From the communication standpoint, with respect to community engagement with focus groups, whether it's Thought Exchange, all of those logistics, let me put it this way, the external consultants certainly are the experts in the subject matter. We're the experts in the logistics and how you get into the buildings, how you coordinate the various groups, all of, how you communicate with all, with all the parents about this particular process. So it's a collaborative effort. It certainly doesn't happen without us. We just don't open the door and say, here, to the focus group or to the leaders of the focus groups. We're alongside, making sure that they're ready to go in there, making sure that they have all of what they need. And also, debriefing. I stand as a liaison with the consultants and a go-between, between the buildings and the consultants very regularly. We've been on the phone, email, quite a bit. So I don't know what any misconception may be, but to inform the community that it is not a solo effort on behalf of the consultants. We just don't open the doors and let HYA come in. D-205 is right alongside and providing that support necessary.
Okay. So then, thank you. I appreciate that. So then, sorry, Bev, I'm going to ask, so you're on the community engagement group, right? So how, how might, how do those groups, how might they be working together and, you know, following the information back? And I guess I'm trying to look, I heard the logistics piece, but I'm wondering, how do, if we have this existing task, task force, how are they utilized during this timeframe? How are they being engaged during this timeframe?
So as far as the subcommittees in our existing Thrive D-205 task force, aside from the focus groups that are going on right now, there's a lot of other work happening at the same time. So as the community engagement team, we are talking about things like educational programs for our parents on topics that we've heard from parents or from principals or administrators through Bev are topics that are of concern or that people want to hear about. So that's one thing that we're doing. We're looking at that. We are going through and sorting through the data that's been coming in through the Thrive D-205 survey, or the Thought Exchange survey, and the We Surveys, and sorting through that to make sense and hone in on some topics that we can then-
Present.
Present, and either present on or bring back to the administration to find out how we could incorporate them into the day-to-day. Then there are still other teams that are working. We have, you know, a committee working on the start time details, and we have committees working on other pieces so that we discuss those and get updates on those when we come together as a full committee. Does that kind of answer your question? That there's different things happening during the time that we're doing the focus groups. That's just one piece of information gathering, but we still have other things going on from the information that we've already gathered.
Absolutely. That's exactly what I was trying to get at. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Next is Freedom of Information Act requests.
Four, two requesting specific bid results which were granted, one requesting specific agreements which was granted, one requesting specific retirement information which was granted. And that is it for that time.
Tweet of the week.
Green button. This will be one of my last times, Dave.
Tell me if I get it.
No.
Sorry.
I won't try to interrupt, but tweet of the week. As the board knows, this is our chance to display some of the great things that are happening in the classroom that make their way and are reported and documented, curated onto social media. And this week's tweet of the week goes to York Student Services, actually showcasing some of what our students are doing. And this particular tweet identifies two students at York who are in the nursing program through the Technology Center of DuPage, and really highlights our career pathways and what the ultimate end in terms of what we're trying to teach them and prepare them for that next step, that life-ready piece. So it says, "Two of our @YorkD205 students were recognized this morning at Technology Center of DuPage Students of the Month for their excellence in the nursing program this year." And it says, "Congratulations to Angelina and Isabella." Of course, that ever-popular hashtag IgniteD205, which is that grouping hashtag that you can put on to any tweet, and we can follow it and track what's going on in our classrooms and see some of those exciting pictures and video. So congratulations to these two young ladies, and thank you to York Student Services for being there to capture the moment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Board Communications, Finance Committee report.
I am going to move through this pretty quickly for a couple of reasons. One, that I'm going to give the power to Courtney to stop me at any point because she's the only board member that did not attend the Finance Committee meeting. So Courtney, anything you want me to go into more detail, I'm happy to. But the other reason I'm going to kind of breeze through this is there are two topics at the end that I think deserve a little more discussion amongst the board. So public comments, we had several representatives from cool cities talking about energy-neutral schools, green-ribbon schools program, and pesticides. We had an up, well, we approved the minutes from the previous meeting on November 19th. And then we had an update on construction projects. And I'm not going to go into a lot of detail there. It's in the minutes. And then Todd talked about our developing sustainability plan. And then the one topic I want to spend a little more time on is our auditor came in, Andy Mace, and talked about deferring the recognition of the property tax, the half of the property taxes that come in at the beginning of June, deferring the recognition of those until July 1st. The discussion basically was that is a more, since we don't intend to spend those revenue, that revenue until the new fiscal year that begins July 1st, it makes more sense, and I think it's more accurate to anybody looking at our books, that we defer the recognition of that revenue until July 1st. So it doesn't appear that we have more money than we actually do. Chris, would you say that's a good explanation? So we'd like to begin to do that this coming fiscal year, so this, beginning this July 1st. I'd recommend that we do two things, that at a relatively soon future meeting, we pass a board resolution giving Chris Welton the authority to do that. But board resolutions are hard to find, you know, five years from now. So I would also recommend that we put it into policy and that we send it to the Policy Committee. Chris Welton's found other districts that have that same accounting procedure, their policies, so we can kind of build off of those and use those as a start, and then send it through the policy process, and then vote on a new board policy. And makes it, why we do that much easier to find for anybody that's looking at why, because it's in our policy manual. And in the future, if someday that wants to be changed, we know what we're changing. It's not just a story of, well, we do it that way because we've always done it that way. I, it's a little, go ahead.
I just wondered, when would we need to have that in place?
Well, if we pass the board, if we pass the board resolution, then that would give Chris the authority to do it for this coming fiscal year. So, and then that takes pressure off the Policy Committee to push something through that perhaps isn't, isn't-
So as long as we got the resolution done-
Then Chris can do it.
Then he can do it, and then we can work on the policy potentially over the summer?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Does that, so the discussion here is, is everybody in favor of that kind of two-pronged approach?
So we're hoping that it will be for the audit for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020, which the auditor comes in, in August to do. So he, he was hoping that we'd have the resolution approved before August.
Not necessarily, we can approve the resolution, but we don't have to have the policy in the policy manual by that point.
Right.
Okay.
But it'd probably be a good goal to try to have the policy done by August, too?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. All right.
Margaret, what do you think about that? You're, you're going to shepherd that through the Policy Committee.
Sounds like we have some doable models out there that we can model off of, and then with the rest of our Policy Committee team, we can take a look at it.
All right. Thank you. And then, Chris, you'll, at the appropriate time, you'll put the resolution on the board agenda? Great. Thank you. After that, we got a quick update on York student fees, increasing communications directly with parents that, if they haven't paid. We discussed the News ELA contract that was on the consent agenda tonight. And then the other topic that I think bears some discussion is, so we talked, Elizabeth Hennessy from Raymond James was there, and she gave us a current bond market update. And, you know, last August, we issued some bonds because interest rates had dropped to the generational lows that they were at in 2016. Well, with the advent of the coronavirus, interest rates, because of the fears in the market, have dropped even lower today. So I asked, you know, what would it look like if we issued? So we plan on issuing, to keep up with the referendum timeframe, $55 million of bonds in April 2021. $10 million of that $55 million is a refinance of an existing bond, so you, that timing is set for April 2021. We can't really move that. But the other, I should say, I'm sorry, $15 million is the refinancing of an existing bond. So the question is, what if you moved up the timing? What does that look like of the other $40 million to take advantage of the low rates that exist right now? So on your desk here is a bunch of numbers. And if I can explain several of those numbers, and frankly, the most important, you see three columns, issue $55 million all at once, split $40 million for, as soon as we could, and then the other remaining $15 million for April of 2021, and see the difference. So if, because we'd be issuing $40 million, $40 million worth of bonds early, we would clearly pay more interest because they'd be outstanding for an additional year. And so that's in the difference column. So if you look at the middle row, the total debt service number, we'd be paying about $4 million more, $4.1 million more in interest. And part of that is capitalized interest, so interest on interest. Currently, in the referendum, we're paying about $18 million of capitalized interest in the total referendum program. This would add additional $2.3 million to that. So the question becomes, why would you spend money, you know, of that magnitude now? And the answer is, because if you see the break-even increase, so if between now and April of 2021, interest rates increase by 60 basis points, that's the break-even. So if interest rates increase by more than 60 basis points, over the life of the bonds, we make up that more, that $4.1 million more that we'd be spending due to an extra year of debt service costs and that capitalized interest. If interest rates go up less than 60 basis points in the next, you know, what is that, 15, 16 months, we would have spent more money than we needed to. So, you know, that's the question that we have before us. And there's several other factors. Well, first of all, let me, all right, so let me read a piece from that Elizabeth Hennessy sent this morning, sent me this morning. Their fixed income market strategist did a great comparison between the coronavirus and SARS and what happened in the interest rate markets. And this is Kevin Giddis talking. He says, "While I tend to agree with the position change, something that the bond market is already priced in, I would caution that we do have some history to lean on when epidemics reach the pandemic stage. In the case of SARS, in late 2002, 2003, and part of 2004, the bond market was fairly pronounced in its reaction. Between November 2002 and July 2003, the 10-year, the rate on the 10-year bond dropped almost 100 basis points to a yield of 3.11 percent. By September 2003, when containment was largely achieved, the 10-year surged back up to 4.6 percent and peaked at- up to 4.6% and peaked at 4.85% by May of 2004." So as you see, that's about 175 basis points that yields went up once the SARS virus was contained. There's currently three pharmaceutical firms working on a vaccine for the coronavirus. You know, I don't know how long that that takes. But I do think that, my personal opinion is that once the, a vaccine is found, that, and the market feels that economic activity returns to its normal trajectory, then interest rates will go back and increase. Now, that's one factor. The other factor is that there are rules around issuing bonds for us, and that, so here are the two rules we need to keep in mind. That we need to expect to spend 5% of that $40 million in proceeds within the first six months after those bonds are issued. So we'd have to spend $2 million in the first six months after issuance. The second rule is that we would have to expect to spend 95% of that $40 million that we issue within three years. Now, we've already moved up, you know, pretty much 60 million in, we just issued 60 million in bonds. So, you know, and we're in the process of all this construction. We're, you know, potentially moving upfield by an entire year in order to spend that money within the rules that are set for us. And the third factor is that while we are well within and have outperformed the promise that we made to our community, in order to save money last August, we raised taxes a little sooner than originally promised, but those taxes over the course will be far less. So currently, our average, what we promised the community in the referendum was that our average debt service would be $17.3 million a year. Right now, the average debt service maximum, because we've issued 60 million in bonds, is only going to be $15.68 million annually. We've promised the community a tax rate for bond service of 5.71, or I'm sorry, I'm sorry, And our projected annual tax rate is going to be 5.0, I'm sorry, 0.521. So under the promised tax rate. So in either case, we've, we've exceeded our promise, or I should say, we've, I just want to make sure that this, this is interpreted correctly, we have, we've outperformed on our promise to the community. So the question is, you know, this would be, again, raising property taxes a little bit early to save money over the long term. I'm sensitive to doing that too many times. So the question is, if the break-even in the next 16 months is interest rates going up 60 basis points, if they go up more, we save the community over the next 25 years some money, but we raise their taxes a little sooner. If interest rates go up less than 60 basis points in the next 15 months, we're better off waiting and maintaining our original schedule. So that is the case before us, as well as I can lay it out.
Do we have to make a decision? Why do we have to make a decision?
I mean, there's, if interest, I mean, well, it's, I guess the answer to that is, it depends when interest rates start going up, right? If interest rates continue to go down, we are benefited by delaying any decision. If interest rates start to shoot up, then it becomes a non-decision, because then we're better off waiting. And this is something certainly we can think about and come back in our next meeting and discuss further. But I just want to make sure that this is a deliberate, measured, considered decision that the board makes.
I think it's really good, you do a good job of explaining the whole piece. I think there's, like you mentioned, besides the financial piece, it's the, both the capacity, the organization, based on what we already have going, meaning facility-wise, like, and also, can we spend, you know, can they ramp up enough projects? We know we have enough projects.
Right.
It's just a matter of-
We don't want to drown in projects.
Yes. Yes. So I think that would be, that would be something, you know, Todd would have to look at. Is that, so-
Do we have any assessment on that yet?
Maybe at the finance, I don't know, when you're doing another Finance Committee meeting.
I don't think we currently have one scheduled.
So there'd be a board meeting before?
Right.
Okay.
Well, we can certainly, at the next, they meet every Tuesday. I mean, I mean, that, we can have that discussion about, depending on how much money we have available, what, what would be the recommended options for the next, you know, the next projects that would make the most sense to fit into the existing work and the bidding, and then try to get you a thoughtful response. I mean, they haven't, they haven't entertained that question specifically, but they can at their next meeting.
Yeah. I don't want to, don't want to run into a situation where we take on too much all at once, because then the benefits of saving some money in the long run are overshadowed by maybe less-than-excellent execution when we go during the construction phase, because we've taken on too much all at once.
I guess I would be interested to know that if there are buildings that we're already touching during the plans that we have, if there's projects that we're going to come back to later, would it make sense to stay in those buildings and complete other projects based on that? That would be something of interest to me. You know, like, you know, plant, you know, Phase 3, we were going to come back to Churchville or wherever and do another project, would it make sense to stay there and kind of combine those timelines? That would, that would make sense to me if it was worth it.
Right. So for example, we had, and Todd will talk about this on March 17th, but we're looking, because of all the work that we had planned for this summer with Stormwater, and then the extra money we had available, we are going to suggest that it makes sense to just do all of Emerson at the same time. So along those lines, the Jackson entrance, you know, or some other project like that is another thing that, that they could think about. So that, that can be one of the, one of the topics they discuss about, or when they bring this up next time.
I mean, that's an excellent point, that maybe there are situations where having more money available today makes the project easier and more cost-efficient. So I just want to make sure we, we ask those questions and thoroughly investigate that. And the next time we meet, we'll see what's happened to interest rates between, because there, of course, there will be a lag between the time we make the decision, and that we can get, you know, we can actually execute issuing bonds. I mean, there's a lot of legal work that has to be done in between. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
All for me.
Courtney, as always, all for you.
Your own personal presentation. All right. Anything else under Board Communications? Okay, then, we have two scheduled upcoming meetings. We have a Tuesday, March 17th, 2020, regularly-scheduled Board of Education meeting here in District 205 Center at 7:00, and Tuesday, April 14th, 2020, regularly-scheduled Board of Education meeting here in District 205 Center at 7:00. And with that, I will call us adjourned. Thank you all for all your work. It's appreciated.